I want to welcome everybody to the July 6 meeting. If I could get approval of the agenda this time.
So moved.
Second, in favor of I? If everybody can stand, I will do an invocation and pledge.
Good Lord, you know what each and every one of our needs are in this room today. Because you know all. We've got friends that, you know, they're sick, maybe it be cancer. Family members, we lift all those up to you. We lift up the men and women that put their life on the line each and every day so that we can be here today and do what we're doing in freedom. Dear Lord, be I as that you be with county, the state, and this country, as you know what the needs of these are. Dear Lord, please be with this board as we make the decision on behalf of the community. Do your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we start planning and zoning the meeting, if anybody's here tonight in opposition of any of these requests, you will get an opportunity to be heard. Mr. Potchowski, you want to present our first?
Chairman, our first item is a request by Donald Rutledge. It's a conditional use request to allow a church at the corner of Braswell Lake Road and Gray Highway. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
All right, Mr. Rutledge, you'd like to come forward and speak?
First of all, I want to thank y'all for hearing our application for condition of use on this property. And I have a plan here of a drawing where we'd like to locate the church and where the driveways would be, if y'all would like to look at it.
I think, we got that? Yes, please. We got a small copy of that. Do y'all have any questions? No, we'll see if anything else you wanted to tell us about.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we can come in off of Gray Highway and we won't be a trouble for Braswell Lake Road at all. And that's what we seeking. And we just come before you asking to be treated fairly with.
Sure. By chance, you've got with DOT and got any?
We have not went that far yet.
Okay, all right. Anybody here tonight in favor of this would like to speak? Just, sure. We try to give both sides equal opportunities, so.
I'm the pastor.
Yes.
And I've mentioned all before. Thank y'all for letting us be here to bring our petition. And I'm the pastor of God's Grace Baptist Church. I just want to say a few things. I won't take my sister's second. We're here to get the land that we purchased rezoned to conditional use of the church. Like Brother Don just said, we're not going to be using Braswell Lake Road right now. We're going to come off Gray Highway on the south side, up on the hilltop. And that was one of the complaints last time. Another complaint we had was too many churches in the area. Nobody has monopoly on churches. You go where you choose to go. That's up to you and the good Lord, okay? And people drive 30 miles to church these days. We don't have, you know, horse and buggy as much, we have vehicles. And you can go where you choose to go. And we just want to know, want everybody to know they're welcome and, you know, we appreciate everything that y'all do. We just love the Lord and we want to worship God and have a place to come together to worship him. And I know he's, and there's a lot of churches, I understand that, but people can go wherever they please and they can choose. Like I said, in our church, we got people that drive 15 miles every Sunday to come to church. And thank God for your prayer a while ago, too. And I just ask y'all really consider it for us and just, we just want to lift the Lord up. This day and time, we need churches, we need people that love God, come together. We don't need people to fight God. And I'm going to tell you something. I looked at our Jones County, there's about 30,000 people in Jones County. Am I close to it? About 30,000. About 19,000 of them's unchurched. Some people never will go to church, but a lot of people have another choice, they can choose to go to God's Grace Baptist Church if they choose to. And we want to further see, please God, what we want to do.
Any questions? Pastor, wait.
I do.
Sure.
So, why won't you use Braswell Lake Road?
Well, there was some, there was some complaints about traffic on that road, Sunday morning and Wednesday night, that's all. Now, we can use either one, but this is over eight acres land, so we've got a lot of land there. And there's a low spot in the front. We'd have to build a road through there, you know, culvert and up on the hill, we'd have the church in the back, in the woods kind of. And it's a perfect little place. But there were some complaints about Braswell Lake. Well, there is a stop sign when you get up to the corner of the property there on Braswell Lake Road. There's a stop sign that will stop people from rushing through there. I've heard rumors that nobody stops there most of the time, but anyways.
I'm just curious, because it's Sunday, right?
Yes, sir. Sunday morning, Wednesday night.
I don't know that neighborhood. Is it very populated?
There's people living on back end there, quite a few.
There's about 25 houses back there.
25 houses, all right. And the reason why I ask, because when you go out the Gray Highway, you're going to have a XO DSO lane, you know, it's going to be crazy expensive. Oh, there's one? Oh, okay, great.
Swap made it easier for them.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Because it had options on the plane, so I was curious, you know? Okay. All right, I'm good then, thank you.
But as far as off the property up there, that's something we could consider, but, I mean, we don't have to do that. And like I said, it's just Sunday morning, Wednesday night. It's not every day. It ain't a convenience store or nothing like that. It's a church to lift the Lord up in, okay? So thank y'all for your help.
Anyone else like to speak tonight in favor for this request?
My name's Joe Parkinson, and I'm one of the deacons at the church. And we've been trying to get us a piece of property here in Jones County for a while. And we ride across this piece of property, and it's right off of Gray Highway. So we figure, well, we wouldn't have too many bumps in the road, being it was right off of Gray Highway. And we're just looking for a home. We want to do good in the neighborhood. We're not here to upset anybody, we're not here to raise Cain, we're just here to praise God. That's it. That is it. And we're just here to do good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody opposed that'd like to come forward tonight? Ladies first, let me get ladies first, and I'll get you. Introduce yourself and.
My name is Barbara Worsham. I live at 283 Pineview Road. I've lived there for 40, 40 years. I am very opposed to this being there. That, where you come off the Gray Highway, it is going to be a mess. I don't care where they put their driveway, you're going, coming from Macon, you have a turning lane. And if they're coming out that way, they're going to come right into that turning lane, right down that hill. You need to look at it to see what I'm talking about. But I am very opposed to it. I'm opposed to the traffic, I'm not opposed to the church, because I love God just like everybody else. But I am opposed to the church being there. And I just wanted to come up here and tell y'all my thoughts.
Any questions for Ms. Worsham? I had a gentleman get up a while ago.
I don't have much, much to say, but I had to get a, my name is Stan Dixon, and I've been in Jones County for 41 years. And I live on Graham Road, right up the road from where this church is, we hope will be, we'll be able to place it there. And the only reason I came up here is because a gentleman last time we were here said that we should build a church in our own neighborhood. This is my neighborhood. I'm retired Army, I live by myself, everybody's gone, and it's close. I don't get out very much anymore. I'm 83 years old. And I want a church to go to. Ask me, why don't I go to another church? I don't want to go to another church, I've tried them. I know these people, and everyone lives together with like-minded people. Especially within how you worship God, and what you know, and what he's told you, and what he's taught us. We don't have an enemy in Jones County, we hope. We love all of you, even this old retired Army First Sergeant. Lord willing, you'll let us have it. Thank you.
Okay, I was asking for, okay, we got extra time?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your services, absolutely. If you're opposed to this request, please come forward. Try to keep both sides equal, get everybody an opportunity to speak, this is a public meeting.
Good evening, thanks so much. My name is Deidra Webb. I'm part landowner, I'm a daughter of Terry and Dolores, they live at 199 Pineview Road. You know, I've just kind of put some points together here. First of all, I mean, I'm a Christian and I believe in God, and I believe some of the things they're saying, I just think that, you know, as far as we're concerned, my parents, myself, you know, and several other neighbors that are present tonight, we just feel like there are some issues, and I'm going to point those out here. You know, first, we, we want it to be known that we are opposing the build. We oppose it for the following reasons. There will be an increase in traffic in this general area regardless of where they put the driveway. Now, they said in the planning and zoning meeting that they were committed to coming off Gray Highway. That's what they said. And one member of the P&amp;Z committee, I remember him saying, "I vote yes" on, you know, on the idea that they're going to come off Gray Highway. Now, whether or not they get that approval, I have no idea. But the reason we do not want it off of the main road is because it is going to increase traffic flow off that main road. They say Sunday morning and Wednesday, if they grow, they can meet anytime they want to. You know, we're not trying to restrict that as far as, you know, if, if you're, you know, well, let me, let me just get through this, but it definitely increased traffic. And if you've been to that location on Gray Highway, you know that the, when you top that, when cars top that hill, it's, you've got seconds to get into the median, to turn left, to go to Macon. And you've just, you've got just about as much time to get out into traffic and really get in the gas and go. So definitely, it's an issue. I know one of my neighbors, she'll speak to this, her son will speak to this, he had an accident, he and his friends, no drinking involved, it was, it was an accident right there where they're planning to come off Gray Highway, okay? So I just, I just feel like there are elderly people in our community that have been living out there for years, and there are also young people driving. And it is going to really increase issues with that, regardless of where they come out. But certainly, if they come out on Braswell Lake Road or Pineview. The next thing, I believe it increases attention to, it'll increase the attention called to the neighborhood being there. I mean, this road is, is very quiet looking, I mean, it's, it's very inconspicuous, you don't even know a neighborhood's back there. So now, you know, that could also increase crime possibly, if people are in and out of there, you know, being curious, wondering what's down there. I mean, that's, that's minor, but then the conditional use for a church will open the door to a much bigger church in the future if they decide to move. It could. Now, I'm, I'm under, I understand it'll go back to rural residential if they move, but we've already swung the door open. And, you know, I, I find it interesting that they closed on this property before this meeting. You know, I, I really feel like that was kind of bold. And, you know, I think it was kind of unfair to, to them if you, if you vote no. It kind of makes the board feel sorry for them if they're stuck with this property and they can't do anything with it. So, I mean, I thought that was pretty bold. Now, if we know you have final say, and if you decide you're going to approve this, we do ask that you make them come off Gray Highway with that driveway. That is what they committed to in that planning and zoning meeting. And regardless of cost, that's what they said, and that's why they got a yes vote. You know, if they get the DOT approval for that driveway, we ask that you consider making them put a buffer of trees, and to have the, the number of feet that that buffer would be determined in this meeting before we leave. Because I would think it would be really unfair to grant, you know, to ask this of them, and then grant a permit for, for them to build and not do the things that we, we ask. And then the last thing would be for them to specify what kind of building they're going to build on this property, whether it's stick built, whether it's a metal building, and absolutely no mobile homes, anything like that. So that, that is our general request, and I'll let somebody else speak. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on something we hadn't heard so far? Trying to get y'all to make sure we, we utilize your time. I've got.
I'm Christie Jackson, I live at 325 Pineview Road, and I'm not sure it's been addressed, but we, our road is one way in, one way out. We don't have an option, so if they're backing up our traffic, we're just stuck. Y'all do realize, it goes in, it makes a circle, it comes back out. So we're at the wheel of traffic to get, if I have an emergency, their church is letting out. I'm stuck. I have no other recourse, no other way to go to get out. If they come out on Gray Highway, we're clear, but if their entrance is on Pineview or Braswell Lake, and there's a flow coming out, I need to get out. I'm not going to be able to get out and in of my neighborhood. And I don't know that that's been brought up, or if y'all realize, it's one way in, one way back out, we're stuck. And that is a big issue for me, which I agree with everything Ms. Webb said. It is a very private, very secluded residential area back there, it's kind of a little tucked away, and now it's going to bring attention to it, people are going to notice it. We have very little traffic other than us coming in and out. But that is a lot of flow on one little road when we have no other way to get in or out of our road if we're blocked. I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, because I don't think that was addressed, that it was one way in, one way out.
All right, thank you. Have another young lady.
I'm Dolores Webb, and my husband and I live at 199 Pineview Road. We are opposed to this facility, or the change in zoning, for the reasons that, of course, have already been stated, safety, it's a hazard that already exists off of Gray Highway. Also, it has an adverse effect on the established character of our, our neighborhood. It's been rural residential for over, I, I don't know, forever, but we've been there for over 40 years. And the majority of the residents have also been there 40-plus, that, we're just an established neighborhood. And it's residential, and we want to keep it that way. There are two adjoining lots next to the property that the church proposes to change the zoning. And I spoke, they live in Warner Robins, they were not aware of these changes. And I spoke with one of the owners, and her mother owns the other lot, and she both expressed the desire for it to stay residential. I have a text from her, they could not attend because her mother's almost 90 years old. So these are some of the reasons that I think, you know, that we should remain rural residential and not open that door for other facilities to take over in the event this church does not make it. I know I went to church with several of these people at Central, and it was a group that left Central to form this church. And so there are Baptist churches to worship in. You just look, and you can see churches that are failing all over Jones County, and you can see where there is a ministry you can join without building a new church. They purchased the property, instead of having pending approval of a zoning change, they purchased the property and then requested the zoning change, which to me is a little bit, I know you have faith, but I think it's a little forthcoming for them to assume that it would be approved. If you consider approval of zoning changes, then, and I'm wondering why you're smiling.
Because you said it was, it was a matter of faith, and, and that is hilarious to me, this is about faith.
I have faith as well, but I have faith that my, my neighborhood will stay the same. So, you know, you can, you can have faith in different places. All mine's in God, and so I can go move to another church and participate in church and have faith that that church will grow. I don't have to go build my own church so I can be with my own little group. So if commissioners consider, based on need, as a reason to approve, there's no need because a Baptist church that they used to attend is exactly across the street. So whenever you get upset about a vote, don't go out and gather a group and try to build another church. It just, to me, is, is, is poor planning for the county, on the county's part. I don't know what they're saying back there, but.
Excuse me, if y'all could, we're trying, the board's trying to listen, if you can minimize your conversation or go down the hall, we won't hear it. I appreciate it, thank you.
As I said, there are two Baptist churches within one and a half mile radius, and there's not a need for a third Baptist church in that area. So those are just the things I have to say.
I'd like to say something, please. My name's Terry Webb. I'd like to say in response to the guy, the gentleman, they got a little while ago, talked about he lived on Graham Road, and he wants to go to church in his neighborhood. He won't be going to church in this neighborhood, he'll be going to church in our neighborhood, and we don't want him over there.
All right, all right, thank you. Is there anyone, anything that anybody's got that this board has not heard? We, you know, we're just trying to utilize the time all we can. At this point, the, the, the nays have had a little more time than the, the request. Okay, you coming up for?
Against.
Against, okay, you got something? I'm, I'm just trying to.
Different than what other people have.
Okay, all right, we just, we, you know, it would change, we're trying to do fair with everybody.
First of all, good afternoon, councilwomen and councilmen. I would just like to say, I'm here today to express my family's strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of the church in our neighborhood. They hit a lot of the traffic and the safety issues that come with it, but they kind of missed the environmental impact of it. With building this church, there's going to be any, you know, loss of green space, increased pollution, and potential harm to local wildlife, or at the very least their habitats. These forests are homes to several wildlife, including whitetail deer, jackrabbit, jackrabbits, foxes, squirrels, woodpeckers, et cetera. And you're taking away their home as well. Not to mention, there's also noise complaints that come along with the churches. I can already hear my neighbors cutting their lawn when they're like five houses down the road. Now I'm going to have to hear all these like speakers and stuff every Sunday, every Wednesday? I mean, I work full-time, I don't have time for that. I rest my case.
What's your name, please?
I'm Patrick Thomas.
And what's your address?
316 Pineview Road. Yes, ma'am.
Does the board need to? I mean, any questions at this point?
What you need to give?
I need to give, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, one, one more against, and it will allow the.
Revival.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I think she's a four. You're a four?
So any more against?
Okay, any more against? All right, one more, and then we'll go, even the tabs.
All right, I will make this very brief.
We're trying, we're trying to do the very best to make sure everybody gets heard.
All right, Gary Harold, 396 Pineview Road, and I also oppose, you know, the building of this church. I've been out there for 37-plus years, and it's always been a residential neighborhood, and I would like to continue to see it as a residential neighborhood. I'm afraid that, you know, having something built out there and coming in, we'll see a church and property and parking and stuff like that as we enter our neighborhood. And I do not want to see that. Like I said, it is a very old neighborhood, and, and there's some, been there longer than I have. So that was one of my concerns as well, as far as, you know, the visual effects and stuff like that. And there again, you know, I am opposed to it. And the other thing that concerns me, which has already been really addressed, is if something should happen to this church, and it does not make it, then we're left with a building, a parking lot, and things like that, that somebody else could ultimately come in here and request, you know, a zoning, you know, variance for that as well, and, you know, and we might end up with a business or something else in there as well. As I said earlier, if it does, should, if it should move forward, I very much would rather see it come in off of Gray Highway, and then my concern is, what if DOT does not approve that? Coming in off of that, will they still be allowed to build and come off of Braswell Lake Road?
DOT, DOT's got the last say on that, so we don't, that's out of our hands when it comes to DOT.
Right, but if, I mean, I guess my question was, if they were not to approve it, if DOT was not approve it, would they be allowed to come in?
That would be a DOT, because they control that, that intersection.
Even coming off of Braswell Lake?
It's their entrance, I would almost, you know, say, because we have, that's out of our control, DOT, that's why I asked earlier.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, I got a young lady wants to speak, and if the pastor wants to come forward
My name is Lynn Reynolds. I live the second house on Braswell Lake Road, and where Pineview runs into it, there's a stop sign there. The yellow lines stop back here and start up here for us to get in our driveway, we have a circular drive. And we've done, been hit nearly three or four times. One car had to run up on the bank. They don't, none of them stop at these stop signs. You can sit on my road and watch them and take pictures of them. I've called to report this, nobody comes out and sees about it, but it, it, there's no bigger chance somebody getting hit coming in and out on Braswell Lake Road than, than the people that did it. So I don't see any reason why that should stop the church.
All right, thank you very much. Would pastor, anybody with the church like to say something on closing before we?
I've heard all this, and, and I respect everybody's opinion, but we, you've heard, and we'll be coming off of Gray Highway. I don't see where it's going to be so traffic-y myself, but we just want to do good for the community, want to love people, and want to help people. And there ain't no better place to do that than in church, serving the Lord and uplifting the Lord Jesus Christ. And I just thank y'all for y'all's time, for considering this tonight, and, and I just pray that we can see it through, and we can have another place to worship God. Because like I said a while ago, it's 30,000 people in Jones County, if 19,000 of them are unchurched, all the churches we have in Jones County couldn't house the people. You say, well, that's never going to happen. Well, you don't know what God's going to do. I mean, I, I serve a mighty God, and I know that, and he can do anything. And I just praise him tonight, and I thank him for the opportunity, and I love every one of you. Opposing or for us? God bless you.
Quick, quick question, pastor. Pastor got one, a quick question.
Question, boy. And I've heard from.
And I've heard from several taxpayers, for and against. The common thing, and I wrote down when I, when I got here tonight, was the entry and exit of Gray Highway, and when y'all showed that, I thought your best option was the closest one towards making, because of the B there gives you more time to get out, also gives you opportunity to turn back, gets you out of the coming in where Brazile Lake does. So that's, to me, would be, if it were mine, that would be the best option for me, if approved. But the other thing I heard was, was being a good neighbor. And I know, every church that I know built wants to be a good neighbor because they want to invite the neighbors in, they want the neighbors to be there. Um, and I, so I heard the question about a buffer between the neighborhood. Most churches, whether it's Greenwood or the one at Graham Road there, are open on the roadside, but then they leave the, the trees on the backside that, that join with the property owners around there. Is that something?
We could do that, yes, sir.
Alright, and, um, the other one was, was the type of structure. I just didn't see it in the...
We don't, right now, it's gonna be either wood or, or metal, steel. So, uh, it depends on what's the economical way, you know, I mean, I've heard the steel's come down, or went up, and, and sticks come down, so, uh, I'd rather have a, a wood building, okay? But we can go either way. But it won't, there won't be no double-wide trailers out there, and, and then something like that, okay?
So, and I guess the question for Tim, our, our current regulations would, would protect us from that, right? Double wides and trailers and stuff like that? I mean, we, our zoning, I mean, our building...
The property's currently zoned to allow double wides, so a manufactured home could be put on the property as a dwelling. You couldn't use a double wide as a commercial building. There are industrialized buildings that look like double wides, that would be a permissible type of church building. They're certified by the state for that use.
That's the only concerns I had that I shared with, shared with some of them that, that had those chairman, was that it'd be an on Gray Highway and being good neighbors, you know, the, the look of it, the inviting look of it, um, coming off of it. Um, I heard a couple of comments about what if, you know, what if, uh, we approve this and they move out for whatever reason, then it goes back to the, the conditional uses only for the applicant, right?
Just for the church. But residential wouldn't?
So the church would be approved and allowed to continue operation. It could become a different church, as long as it operated within the parameters that were approved for this. It could continue operation under a new name. Uh, there would be, if the church closed for a period of six months, then it could not reopen unless it went through this process again. But if another church came in in five months and twenty-nine days, they could begin operation there at this location.
But nothing other than a church?
That's correct.
Any questions from the board?
Goodness, sir. No, you're fine.
Yep.
I only got a comment, Chairman, that I, I think they've, they've agreed with all these conditions here, that if, if this, the board's will to, uh, to approve this, I would recommend that we put these in the conditions of approval.
You doing that as a motion? Commissioner, Commissioner Vaughn's not here, what's the board's wishes?
So you, you, you agree with all of them? You don't want to put it into a motion?
I, I agree with the stipulations here.
Okay.
If it's the board's wishes to approve, approve it.
So, to be clear, it is trees, buffer?
Mm-hmm.
And then it's the driveway off of Gray Highway? And what else?
I was asking about the structure, but they said it was based on our guidelines anyway, so it'd be a, a metal commercial. I can tell you right now, if he's going on price, it's gonna be wood. Yeah, 'cause, uh, metal's out, out of the...
Alright, so, motion to approve with the parameters of the trees to remain as a buffer, and for them to go off of Gray Highway? Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Go ahead.
Clarification on the buffer. Are we strictly requiring on the property line? Are we buffering from Brazile Lake Road?
From the, from the residents, the view of the residents.
It's Pineview and Brazile Lake.
Yeah.
And how thick is the buffer zone?
So I don't think we can require, um, a, a square footage of, of buffer, and I don't think we should. I, I think if there being a notice that...
I don't think you should if you don't have a buffer and determine how much it is before...
Okay, okay. Hold on a minute, what, no, 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 this is a discussion on the board, I'm sorry.
So I don't think if we have any guidelines on what that buffer needs to be, we, they've asked, um, the, the people have asked for them to be good neighbors and, and leave a buffer, and they've agreed to do that. I don't know that we have a, a standard for buffers. It's be a reasonable distance. I mean, five feet would not be enough, but maybe fifty feet would be a reasonable buffer, I don't know, maybe twenty-five?
Hold on.
Tim, may I have some clarification?
Our ordinance does define buffer, and it's that it provides an effective visual screen of all operations taking place on the property. For other areas, we do specify minimum thicknesses of buffers. That would not apply for buffering along the, the public right of way. So that's why I was asking for clarification there. If we say a buffer's required, are we just talking on an adjoining property line, or are we talking along the frontage of Brazile Lake Road also?
This was him. I, I don't want a buffer, but...
Alright, well, we got a motion, a second, and, and at this point, we're discussing.
We discussed, yeah, the buffer on, I would say a buffer in anywhere where the residents of that road have to see it. They're not, they're, y'all are not trying to find people on Brazile Lake Road or Pineview Road as your primary customers, I'm gonna call them customers. And I think you're, if you're coming in off of Gray Highway and you're sitting back on the road, Gray Highway is your open frontage.
I have visited some people in there, and I've had several of them, Tim, and they've been jerk with the strawberries.
Right. So when you go down Brazile Lake Road, you don't see a wide open lot. You see, you see houses and, and yards, and they're, they're manicured, and I think that's been, to me, being a good neighbor to, to keep that, that look going down the road.
Any more discussion?
The applicant has provided two different site plans. Uh, the one that was provided this evening is different than the one that's contained in the application. Uh, just wanted to clarify if we were gonna hold them to one of those site plans, or if they're allowed to place the structure anywhere they choose on the property.
So...
Do they also have the one that was presented to your board?
They were handed a copy that I have here. It was the one that was passed around the board.
So that's the one?
Yes, that is different than the one that was provided with the application.
What's different?
The footage requirements. They showed a three hundred foot setback, um, from property lines, and it does not clarify where Brazile Lake Road is on the one that they provided initially.
Y'all were talking about moving further this way.
Right, go up to south end.
Right. This end closer towards making.
Yeah, we're gonna be on the backside of the property, who will come out of the south end of the property, who will make it?
Yes, sir.
I was concerned about building setbacks. They show clear, the one that was provided this evening had very clear setbacks, um, showing a hundred and fifty feet off Brazile Lake Road. The one that you were provided with there does not make it clear, and it could be interpreted as saying there was a three hundred foot setback. I just wanted to make sure that was clear on what we were approving this evening.
This is the only one that I have?
There's one in your package, sir. That was the one that was provided by the applicant when they applied. There you go.
So the one they provided tonight gives more, more, more footage from Brazile Lake and Pinewood, moves it closer towards making, towards the wooded park?
Actually gives them more buffer.
Yeah, and if that's what, yeah, it gives you more buffer from the neighborhoods and from the roads, so...
So we're approving this one? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
We're approving the one they showed tonight, 'cause I see updated version, right?
The one they showed tonight only shows a hundred and fifty feet off of Brazile Lake Road.
And so, the, yeah, and this, the one in here gives more buffer? That's why I said this one, yeah.
The original, the one contained in your binders gives, is the original, but gives more buffer, is that correct?
Yes, the, the one in the binder is three hundred feet. This one is two hundred feet and a hundred and fifty feet. So the, the one that was provided this evening is less setback.
So this one has more?
Okay, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, I?
Ah.
Let's have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. You want to go and present the next one?
So it would be the white binder draw, it would be the white binder version?
Chairman, our second item this evening is a request from Legacy Orchard at Holt. This is for a conditional use to allow an event venue at two, 156 Holt Chapel Road. Planning Commission has recommended denial of this request.
Is Representative, uh, of Legacy Orchard here tonight?
I just want to wait a minute, let it clear out.
Just let them, let them clean that clear out a little bit.
How's everyone?
Good.
My name is Kenneth...
Hold on just a moment, let's let the room clear out.
Ask them to move down. Ask them to try to move down, 'cause we can't hear them. Give us a second, they'll wing here. Okay.
What kind of candy?
We'll try it now.
Okay, good evening, folks, good to see you here this evening. Um, my name is Kenneth Solomon, my brother Bernard Solomon here accompanies me. We both, uh, created this entity we, we refer to as, uh, Legacy Orchard at Holt, simply because we want to honor our grandparents who previously owned the property. Our grandparents were pretty much acres of that area when they were, uh, living there. A lot of the community members navigate or congregated at their place for various reasons. My grandmother was a good cook for one, and, and there was a hospitality that they showed everyone. So what we're hoping to do is honor them by creating a space that will allow people to come together again, like we used to in the old days. Given opportunity for people, whether it be families, businesses, churches, uh, other organizations in the community, to have a place that we can, they can go to, to, to further their efforts for unity. So we, we offer, uh, we want to create spaces that will give, uh, honor to my grandparents for one, and then help other families preserve their family legacies by, by giving them opportunities to engage in activities that will help build memories, and also foster, uh, family connectedness. And, uh, of course, we know that the, the community has a lot of organizations that exist, and there are always opportunities for other facilities to accommodate these organizations, whether it be a, a local business, or, or, or boys and girls, or a, uh, a church facility who wants to go outside of their own, own, uh, environment to do some special training or special, uh, fellowship, and as they will. And, um, we hope to be able to facilitate those kinds of things. Um, there will be other personal growth opportunities that we want to leverage in this particular venue that we are hoping to, to create. And so this is the whole gist of what we're doing. Our goal, just like, no different than the church, is to bring people to a place of, of unity with one another. Society has shown itself to be in disarray, and we feel like the family structure is the place to, to correct it. So what we like to do is be a, a igniter of that, to be able to share, uh, tools and resources for people to begin to, to, uh, correct some of the things that we have experienced here in our societies today. So what we have carved out is, the property sits on fifty-four acres total, but we have carved out about twenty acres that we want to designate to start creating this environment that we're talking about. Uh, we're sitting on the front end of that road, in terms of any homes or structures and everything. Uh, the closest thing to us is the, uh, the church, the old abandoned church and schoolhouse building is part of historic stuff. Um, and so we, we just, the area that we're gonna use primarily is already cleared of, of, uh, of, uh, foliage and trees, so it's not gonna be a whole lot of big, uh, construction activity that's necessary there. But this is the, the gist behind what we're, we're applying for in this particular case.
Any questions?
Not this moment, yes, sir.
Alright, is anybody here tonight in opposition to this request?
Ladies first. I'd like to go ladies first, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Get your names and your address for the record, please.
I'm, my name is Ann Little. I really live in Tampa, Florida, but my parents' home is at the end of the road. I'm here, like, almost live there, and I'm restoring it, and one day I hope to be on my home on the property. To me, this property has been in my family over seventy-three years. They have raised, my grand, my parents have raised their children, their grandchildren, their great-grandchildren. It's a family community. We feel safe there, it's quiet, we have good neighbors. Um, my aunt, to keep it like that, she purchased me the like fifty-some acres. My parents and my uncle, we own a hundred acres. My sister has bought property there, right, in fact, she lives right next to where the Solomon wants to put their property. She owns about forty-five acres. So we have a lot of property in there that we want to keep sacred for our children, our other children. It means a lot to us, like, they want to build a legacy for their parents. We want to keep it for our children, because that's what our parents worked hard for, to make sure that we keep this property, because that's what they worked hard for. We have neighbors that have moved in, built about six houses back in their beautiful home. Everybody get along, neighborhood is quiet, we feel safe, and we want to keep it that way. I commend them for what they're trying to do in the community, but not in our community. We don't want it in our community. And so, uh, I'm against it, totally against that. I just think it would change the whole atmosphere of the community. It's a beautiful piece of land down in there. It's one way in, one way out. And that's the way we want to keep it, we want to keep it quiet. Thank you.
I'm Keisha Dawson. Um, my parents, her sister, my mom and dad live next to the property of where they're trying to have their seventy-eight and seventy-nine years old. I'm forty-four years old, this is where I grew up, this is my second home. We do not want that disturbed. We don't want strangers or someone coming in, crime, traffic, all of that, to be a part of the community of where I grew up. Um, and like she said, this is family property, and we want to keep it that way. I don't want to have to go to my parents' home and have to pass by traffic parties and all of that. They're seventy-eight years old, seventy-nine, and when I think about them having an event at, late at night, and my parents are trying to sleep, they live next to that property, and I just don't want that there either. My brother and I own property, we purchased, that's next to my parents, so I'm also a property owner out there too as well. And so we just don't want that, that's not for that community. I've been there forty, like I said, I'm forty-four years old, spent thirty years, almost living out there. I still go there. It's just not what that community needs. It's a residential area, we're proud of it. My grandparents own over a hundred acres there. It's not what we want.
Any questions?
And we ask that you all, please, do not allow this to happen. There's well water out there, a lot of things they have not considered. Where are they gonna get that from?
Any questions for the board?
Are there any more?
Any more opposed to this? Alright, we, uh...
They don't live here.
Thank y'all.
But I would say they don't live here.
I think y'all were next, and we're trying to, we're trying to keep it equal, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, Council, my name's Lonnie Smith, Jr. I live at one hundred and forty-seven Mohan Road, been there since nineteen ninety-seven. The land was purchased in ninety-one. I currently own four parcels of property that are rock throwing distance of what they're talking about, totally almost a hundred and sixty acres. We talked about a lot of things, I've heard about for the community, I've heard about church. When you put the possibility of two hundred and fifty people and a hundred and sixty vehicles on this small county road that Old Chapel is, my children and grandchildren, yes, I still have a twelve-year-old, ride their bicycle and play in the woods. And in today's world, my whole lifestyle would have to change if you change this piece of property. I can't let my children go play in the woods when two hundred and fifty strangers are two hundred and sixty-five yards from the border of my property to the border of this property, okay? Listen, I bought this property many, many years ago with my family. We deer hunt, dag gum right, man, talk about whitetail, I kill my share every year, but that's part of the love of living in America and my Second Amendment rights.
I admire what you're trying to do, and I knew Mr. Solomon, he was a fine man.
You hate Solomon?
I knew Mr. Solomon, the pastor way that lived there. Okay, well, I knew that person that lived there.
I would also like you to ask these gentlemen, if I'm not mistaken, neither one of these gentlemen-
Direct your comments to the board.
Neither one of these gentlemen currently live on the property. If they had a half a million dollar home similar to what we live in, or Mr. Joe has, and they were willing to build this event in their backyard so they could manage it, it would be a totally different aspect. I believe on my property, where I live and stay and can look after, is a completely different aspect than someone building it, living in Stone Mountain, Georgia. Now, 250 people come, 160 cars down this little road, they got to have set tank for 160 people, 250 people. Well, who's going to be there to police and say when it gets to 250 and they invite their friends, 400 don't show up? Who's going to police the fact that they're not going to bring alcohol and guns? Now remember, I got a 12-year-old rides her bicycle on that road, I got to stop that. I'm not going to get noticed, they're going to have a party Friday night at 5:00. It's whoever pays the bill to rent that building, okay? I love Jones County, spent most of my life up here. Mr. Pitts, the Mohans, everybody that's historical factor in Jones County was a huge part of the man I am here today, including my father Lonnie Smith, who served on the Board, Farm Bureau, many, many years, him and Miss Betty. So I ask you selfishly to look at this as a small man who bought a piece of land to raise a family on in the country, and have a piece of my grace in heaven, and that's what I have. I'm going to ask one more word of, Mr. Wood is my commissioner who represents me, how many people have contacted you in favor personally about this?
Other than the applicants, one.
How many people have contacted you negatively about this piece of property?
I have lost count.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Chairman, Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, guests, I appreciate the opportunity to be an American, thank you.
We got one more, a young lady in the back, and then we'll-
This lady up here's been raising her hand the whole time.
Okay, all right, go ahead. We got two more, and then we're going to give the applicant opportunity. And please, if it's something we haven't, we've only heard, try to, we're just trying to shorten, you know.
Okay.
We want everybody to be heard, but just-
I took notes so I can be brief and bring out points that weren't already brought out. Mine were more of questions, because we've talked about, you know, and we've written letters about all the other things that have already been mentioned. But, you know, I know from the last meeting, the applicant mentioned a few things. So some of my concerns, you know, he mentioned that, well, his plan eventually is to live there, but there's no way to enforce that that's actually going to happen, and, you know, that he would have traffic controls. But again, there's no way, a lot of the promises that are made, I don't see a way to enforce those if it was to pass. I don't know how you could enforce something like that, that he would have to live on the property. Also, he's applying for, I believe, a conditional use, not commercial, right?
That's correct.
So, and, I mean, if he's not living there and this is profiting, unless it's not profiting, he's not just planning events. He mentioned he's planning on putting cabins that people can stay overnight, he's planning on doing a pavilion, this is not just an event center, this is also a place that people can stay overnight. So I don't know why that wouldn't be commercial, it's no longer just an event, if it's overnight, or if it's a weekend stay, or if it's a verbo, or whatever. And then also, you know, we mentioned that it's a dead-end road. I'm one of the people who moved there recently, and when you're not from the area, I don't like using a GPS. So a lot of times what you do is you see these three little side roads, and you think, well, that'll get me back to the road, and it doesn't. It's all dead-end, 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 and dead-end. So if you end up with 250 people who don't know their way around, you have them ending up in Lonnie's house, my house, and several of the other neighbors' houses. You know, I'm the only house on my road, so that means they go all the way down just to be at my house, and I don't know who these people are who are coming down my driveway. But also, the amount of traffic is not supported. My road is very, very tiny. I mean, you can't even fit two cars on it. So those were the points that nobody mentioned that I was thinking of. And then also, he mentioned that it would not be big construction, because the land is already cleared. However, you still have, we just built a house, you still have to grade it, that's a huge undertaking. I think he mentioned he wants to build a 5,000-square-foot place, I think it was 5,000, right? So, I mean, there's no way to call that not big construction. If you're going to clear a parking lot that fits 160 cars, you're going to have pavilions, you're going to have cabins, and you're going to have a 5,000-square-foot building, you've got to grade the land, you have to bring in trucks who are going, if they're doing roof trusses, I mean, we did roof trusses, that's a huge truck, it destroyed our road basically. I'm talking about ours personally, our little private road. It's just a little gravel thing, and, you know, I mean, those trucks just bringing our tiny little 1,200-square-foot house were horrible on our road, we had to bring in more gravel. So you're talking about that, but on this scale, that's definitely big construction, there's no way it's not. So those were the only points that I don't think have been mentioned yet, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One more time, we had another lady, is anything been said yet that we hadn't heard? None?
Anything else opposed, yeah.
I'm sorry.
She had been raising her hand, but-
I'm sorry, who am I missing?
This lady in the front.
Have we heard anything?
Okay.
The applicant, we're trying, one more, like I said, can you, as long as there's something waiting, I already heard, we're just trying to, you know, conserve time.
It's similar, my 904 Etheridge Road, my road directly backs up to this road that's going to be the event place, and my thing is concern, I've got an eight-year-old, I've got a four-year-old, we've been there six years, we've put our hands in the dirt and made the place what it is, it still does a lot of work, but still, safety is our thing. You know, we've got two kids, the whole thing about letting them go outside, because we live in a place they can, is huge, I mean, that's our whole life, so.
All right.
To have that taken away is, you know, we'd have to move somewhere else to get to a place where it didn't have a bunch of strangers that are going to wander through the woods and be lost, and, I mean, there's no fences, there's no gates, there's no barbed wire, there's just trees. So on my own land, I got 12 acres, I can get, you know, turn it around, but you've got 250 strangers on a piece of land that are out there having a good time for whatever event they're having, they're going to wander around and enjoy the land, and it's just going to be, you know, unsafe place for anybody who's not familiar with the area, and same kind of thing, but just safety for us and the wildlife that's going to be pushed back away from our house. We've been feeding animals for six years, getting them to be healthy and popular, and now it's going to be pushed away because we directly have the same border of land, so safety is the main thing for us, light pollution, noise pollution, we can enjoy all those things, being quiet, being, we can see the stars we can't see in town, and the main thing is just safety for the kids and not having strangers wandering through our land.
All right, well, thank you.
What was your name?
Matt Jones, 904 Etheridge Road.
I'm sorry about that. The applicant like to have any rebuttal on what's been at once? I mean, come forward, you got, we're trying to keep all the time.
This board hasn't heard some of the things that we addressed with the planning on before.
I guess, wait, hold on. Are you going to allow the people who are for it to speak?
I mean, we will.
That's what he's asking for, people that are for it.
No, we asked us to go, but we never heard anybody.
Our attorney's keeping up with how many people are against, and give just as much time for those that are for it.
Yes, if you want anybody for it to speak, then before you all have rebuttal, that's fine.
That's what I was wondering.
Sure, okay. All right, anybody forward for this request at this time?
My name is Will McGree, Pastor, New Thomas Baptist Church. I grew up with these other bands, grew up in that area, and I think the problem is that it's sad that it's being presented as a fly-by-hole in the wall, just nothing. Not a lot of questions have been asked, it's something good for the community, and I think the thing about it is that it's like there's going to be bad people there, there's going to be murderers, robbers, and gangsters and stuff, and that's not, that's the kind of place. These young men are businessmen, one was, is retired, Priscilla Ann, and I'll say his brother is executive as well. And it's being presented as something that's bad, bad that it's going to, I can't let my child, I can't do this, and that's not the kind of place. They presented, said they would have security, and I'm sure it won't be just anybody's security. And it's just the same thing as Butler Hall, only used when it's doing, same thing as the fairground. That's a one, that's a one-lane road going to the fairground. My niece just had her one-way graduation party there, and it's closer to the neighborhood. It's not, I think it's being presented as something that's not, that's going to be, well, can I just say what I want to say, because I am here anyway, as ghettoized, and it's not ghettoized, it's going to be class, and it's not going to be so people can drive, I've already conversed with them, it's not going to be where somebody can drive up on the property and be there, there's going to be gates in front of the property, so nobody's going to be able to hang around, like somebody was doing on the property. Now, in the road, I had to go back and see for myself, because that's not how I remember that road. Like I said, I grew there, I went to church at Holt, I wasn't born, but we used to have something called society meetings, and, society meetings, you know, society meetings, we had them there at the plays, and we went there, so it's history there. And I think we missed the point, it's legacy, and there's not a lot of things that represent African-Americans that are sealed in Jones County, this is one thing. I think that if there's something, I think what you need to consider, if 250 is too many, don't just throw it out the window, let's trim it back, so, and ask them, some more questions, can they trim it back, is the cabin, it's too much? Okay, ask them about throwing away the cabin, don't throw away the opportunity for them to reach young boys, young, young girls, like we're trying, because I hope and I pray to God, because we're getting ready to build a gym on Damascus Church Road, and I hope to God we don't have this kind of rebuttal trying to help somebody and to put a pre-cake, because some of our young children. This is a place where you can go, and the only place that close anything near it is in, I think, Roberta, Georgia. I think the problem is we looking at it as being something bad, but it's really not something bad, it's not going to be a run-by-the-day place, it's going to be a place that's going to be accessible, and it would be sad for us to think like that and to present it like that. And those, like I said, I know these guys, I grew up with them, and I know what they're going to do, it's going to be top class, and they're going to have security there, nobody's going to be able to be on the property and do these things as it's being presented. And because when I looked at the map, it's on this side, the house is on the other side, half-bought, quarter-mile-to, it won't be a noise, I think it's just the road. I really don't know why it was denied. I guess it was because of the road, but I drove with that road the other day just to make sure for myself, and the road is still drivable. Thank you.
They have two more minutes.
Two more minutes for the applicant. Any questions?
We have three more minutes.
No, I was just saying if there's any more for the-
All right.
Three more minutes.
We got three.
Any more for, yeah.
Like I said, we're trying to keep everybody equal.
So, I understand everyone's consternation about the potential of what might occur. And my brother and I, we don't do this lightly without thinking about those things as well. And in the meeting with the planners on it, we did address some of those things that people brought up, and we are planning to make sure we are taking those things into account as we go forward, with solutions for addressing these types of things, with potential noise, with potential traffic flow, with all these things we have tentative plans to address. The property will not be wide open for anybody and everybody just to get to, because we have an investment that we will have to protect. So we will not leave it wide open for just anybody randomly run in there. They would have to be scheduled to get through into the property, because it will be secured. The other thing is, as far as the additional facilities that you saw on the application, if you look at the site plan, we did not include those things, because those are futuristic types of things we're talking about. And specifically, the cabins, they were a thought that occurred to say, my brother and I, we have, each have three children, and we want them to be, to enjoy this place. So we were proposing to build enough cabins that they would have, each of them, they come in alternate turns, will have a place to stay. Then a larger lodge, so all of us want to come together to do a holiday retreat, or summer vacation, or whatever we want to do, we can do it there. It is not designed to turn it into an Airbnb or vacation by rental type of thing where it's consistently being, you know, seeing people coming in and out of there. This is for us. But, and even when, if nothing occurs with this in the future, our families can still utilize this for our family. Nobody else can have, need to enjoy if they don't want to. However, we want to unite the community. We want Jones County to thrive, and so we want to be integral in that part. And yes, I do intend to build, God gave me the strength and the life to live long enough to build my home there, this is the only reason I wanted this property to begin with, so I could live there. It's just, in the triggulation of time, you have to make these things happen. So I am working toward these things as well. We want to resolve some of this stuff first to see where we go next. So we put in the requests to see if the concept that we have proposed is something acceptable to the county, so that we can help Jones County thrive. Because I love Jones County myself, I have a lot of time spent here in Jones County myself, just like others. No, I don't currently reside on that road, but I do come every week. And so this, it's not like I'm not, I'm absent, and it just sits there, and especially if we build any additional structure, it's not going to be unattended, you know. So I just want to say that regardless of the opposition, and I fully understand those things, my purpose and point is, is I want to be integral part of Jones County, and that is my intention.
More questions from the board?
So, just for clarification, it's for you and your family, not other people?
For clarification, in terms of the ongoing futuristic ownership of it, it's for my family, not to be sold to anybody, but the use of it is for anyone in the community.
The multi-purpose building, pavilions, that really is like a first phase of what we want to do, which would be for the community.
In which it would be gated off, locked up, signage, people will know, they're coming to Legacy Orchard at Holt, they will see a big sign, they won't be wandering down the street looking for us, because it's a sign, we have signs. If we have an event planned, we, one of us at least, will be there. It's not, no, I don't know of any building who will leave their whole building unattended when they've got customers. That doesn't make sense, so.
Any other questions for the board?
May I have a chance?
No, 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 we can't, I'm sorry, Mr.
But he's made some statements.
Okay, wait, no, no, I've got, I've got, it's at the vote at this point, I'm sorry. What's the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I've listened to everything here tonight, listened to the community over the past month. I make a motion to deny item P2.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, it's discussion on the second, Commissioner, Kitchens.
I've listened to everything tonight, too, and I had some, I had some concerns based on the staff report here, you know, because we, obviously, when we're talking about 5,000 square foot, 160 spaces, 250 people, you are going to talk about increased traffic, you are going to talk about facility needs, you are going to talk about lighting and noise levels and that kind of stuff. But one of the things that, what somebody mentioned earlier about, is it commercial or is it going to be for events, you know, private events, this type thing? And I've heard a couple of words about our customers and our future use and our investments. To me, that's more of a commercial use to me than bringing the community together. And if I'm being totally honest, I've heard for the community, unite the community, even Mr. Green talked about, which needs to be for the community. I deeply, deeply respect that y'all want to keep the legacy of the family name, that is, that has struck home with me. But also, when I hear it's unite in the community and for the community, but everyone in the community says this is not something we want. So that makes it tough for me to say this is for the community. We did approve one in Juliet several years back that was up to 100 guests, that's on a 40,000-acre national park, and it's the only residence on there. We had, what, three weeks of, I'll say it, pure hell, about 40 participants at an overnight stay, basically a bed and breakfast. That was tough. So when we, when we look at conditional use here, there's four or five things that we have to grade them on. And for me, those conditional uses, when we're looking at now about future plans and future expansions, it gives me a little bit of angst about where the intent to go with that is. And when you start with 250 people, that's a lot in a very rural area with nothing but elderly and homes that have been there for as long as these have been, everybody that talked tonight talked about grandparents, parents, and childrens that have kept their legacy, the same thing that you guys are trying to do. So again, I deeply respect that part of it, but I just don't think it's the right place, in my opinion, which is why I second the motion.
Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, on denial. Mr. President? Mr. Caskin?
Chairman, our next item is a request by William Moore, it's a conditional use to allow metal siding on a dwelling located at 145 James Road, it is zoned RR. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, not Moore.
William Martin.
Martin. Did he say Martin?
I thought you said Moore.
Martin, did he? My bad, my hair, now excuse me. Mr. Martin, are you here? Come on.
Evening. I'm William Martin, I own the property at 145 James Road. And I had a package, I think, that y'all may have, may not have, that was showing the building, yeah, okay.
We've got it in here.
And you've got some questions for me. As base, it's gonna be my home, and it's not gonna look like a transmission shop or something like that. It's gonna, gonna look good, gonna have brick on the outside, gonna be a metal building, probably a darker gray with a black roof and trim.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Any questions? No questions. All right. Just give, anybody here tonight in opposition to this request? No one? Tim, I know we've been running into some issues, engineering on some of the stuff, we've been getting...
I've had extensive conversations with the applicant.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's, that's a matter, we just don't want to, you know, get it, get into that, because we've had a few issues on that, too. No one here is in opposition to this request? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it. Thank you.
Chairman, our final zoning item is a request by VRM Family Properties, it's to rezone from C2 to R1 for the purpose of constructing four single-family dwellings. This is located at 2992 Gray Highway, four and three-quarter acres. Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Is a representative from VRM here?
I'm here, sir. Yes, sir. I am Jim Rollins, 4124 Arkright Road, Nakin, Georgia. And I'm here representing the property owner.
Okay.
Well, before I get started, yes, I need... We are requesting, or the owners requesting, a rezoning from C2 to R1 for the sole purpose of building four single-family dwellings. You have the planning and zoning request, we have a plat of a subdivision of the property, we have a curb cut on Gray Highway built by DOT, it'd be only one curb cut, which is DOT's requirement. A letter from Jones County Water, letting you know that water is available. We have the percolation test with septic tanks, we have provided typical floor plans and elevations for the houses proposed to be built. I think the only other thing that I would mention is the comprehensive plan. I have a letter from, from the Regional Planning Commission regarding the comprehensive plan, and also happen to have the legislation with me. The comprehensive plan is a roadmap for a county to look at as growth. I have been in the real estate business for 24, 25 years. I'm also chairman of the Monroe County Planning and Zoning. The comprehensive plan is not a zoning document, it's simply a guideline of how you would like the property to be developed. But often, that is not the case for how property is developed. Like I say, I'm well aware of that. We are, I, I would like to answer any questions for the board, and then like to have the opportunity to speak for anybody opposed.
Any questions from the board? None? Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Could you get your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Keith Roberts, and my address is 2996 Gray Highway, which is next door to this. I have a commercial business there. My con against it is, one, is we went through this a couple of months ago, Gray Highway is developed as a commercial corridor, and I'm not sure why we wanted to be backing up doing residential. My personal, my personal concern is, is once residents move close to my office, I have a lot of trucks there with tools and expensive items on them, and I'd be concerned with vandalism and theft and that kind of stuff. The other items we had talked about previously was, which he, he said he addressed them for is doing a topo and it perking, because my property does not perk, and I'm next door to him. And I'm not a septic tank man, but if you ever start cutting and engraving, engrading and moving dirt, you cannot put bleeds lines in undisturbed dirt or disturbed dirt. So, I'm not sure if he's got enough information for y'all to make a decision, but I tried to think of pro, I just can't think of a pro for me or for the county as a whole. Oh, and as a right-of-way there for the Georgia Power to get up to that transmission line also, I don't know if that's been taken into account. I don't know, I just, like I said, I just, doesn't feel, doesn't feel good about residential coming that close to a commercial property. I do have several people opposing this, they just weren't able to make it, make it tonight. And I've also had several people come to me, asking me, did I know who owned that, that they was interested in buying it as a commercial development? So, that may be another option for the owners, to do a build-a-suit or something for a commercial development instead of changing to residential.
Any question for Mr. Roberts? Anyone else in a pose for this? Anyone else?
They have equal time right now.
All right.
First of all, I, I guess one of the things that mentioned was crime or who's gonna live there. These homes are for sale. Somebody that can afford to buy one of these homes, very unlikely that they are criminals. But, I will tell you that it makes no difference where you live, crime is gonna catch up with you, it's just a fact of life. The owner of the property would be, be glad to leave some buffers on the sides of the property for the commercially, if that's an issue. As far as I know, Georgia Power Company does not have an easement across this property. They may be crossing it to get to the transmission lines, but they do not, I don't think they have an easement. At least, I can't find one of the record.
It's, it's on page 45, it's noted on page 45 of a existing 150-foot power line easement.
Through, through this property?
Yes.
It's on the left side.
Yeah, it appears to go across two lots.
Right.
Oh, that's on the power line, it's not on the property. That's actually the power line. The existing easement, that's Georgia Power Company's easement, and it's not on this property.
I mean, you wouldn't be building on the easement, but it's certainly directly adjacent, okay?
Next to the easement, not on the easement. I have to go ahead and answer any other questions?
Any other question? What's the board's wishes?
Chairman, I'd make a motion to deny it based on the existing uses of that property, it's commercial for a reason, and also suitability of the property for the zoning purposes.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion?
Chairman, I, I just want to make it, make a point that they brought up about the joint, the comprehensive land use map, and this board spent a lot of time two years ago coming up with that. We sat meeting after meeting, and I think they're exactly right, that is a roadmap that we use, because if you don't, if you don't plan out a map now, you're not gonna know where you're going 10, 20, 50 years from now. So, we have committed to that being a commercial corridor along Gray Highway. We've looked at future planning on several different aspects. I think it would be detrimental to us as a county to start putting residential homes on a commercial corridor like that, because we then turn around and, and diminish the appetite for commercial to, to be housed there. So, that, that's my reasoning behind it, Chairman.
Yeah, I still remember last time that this was brought to us, I know there was, Mr. Roberts made a comment that there was people interested, and I think there was three people interested that reached out to, I think it was a young lady came in here last time, said we're very much interested in buying this property, because I think the argument was he couldn't sell it, it's commercial, but there was three people interested that, to my knowledge, as of Saturday, two of them called and said, look, we're still interested in this property, so there's a, there's an opportunity for commercial. Just giving you that heads up there. There was never any call last time on this zoning, when they reached out, they asked for their phone number, they, she wouldn't give them the phone number, so they handed them their card and said, we're interested in this, and I got two calls today, said they were still interested. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're done now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate you leaving in my name.
All right, if we move on, maybe we can speedate a little bit on this. Consider it genuine, approval of minutes, we had the first Tuesday of July 16th, along with executive session, if y'all have had an opportunity to review the minutes, entertain a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Hill? Are you here tonight? Glenn Hill? All right, Mr. Spires?
I'm here.
You want to come forward?
I don't think I can stand that long, so you may have to read that for me.
Yes, sir, but legal, I'm not allowed to read that, because there's...
I'll try.
De- de- I mean, you need to, we need to pull a, we need to pull a chair up there for you to sit.
No, I'll, I'll check it out.
And there's a three-minute limit on this, your comments.
We're gonna have to do three minutes, our time's running, but...
In December of '23, settlers' construction started a water line in front of my house on Robert, Homer Roberts Road, and it's still going, excuse me. They moved on, but they didn't come and put the grass on my, in my yard back like it was. Actually, when they started, they piled dirt in my yard without my permission, like they were in common in China. All right? They left it there for about a week, so quite naturally, it killed the grass. All right? Then, when they went to put the dirt back where it should be, they did it with a track backhoe with teeth on the bucket, so it dug up more ground. Well, I kept Mr. Ingram, Tim Ingram, he came out, looked at, he's a very nice guy, by the way, and he said they need to fix their county right-of-way back like it was, and your yard back like it was. So, I went to see him several times, they finally got a load of sod out and put it in places, but they left some, it just wasn't there. And I had centipede sod all over the place, all right? I go back to him again several more times, they brought another load out, they bought at a yard sale last year, because 90% of it was dead. Sod will look dead even though it's good, it's got dirt on the roots, so when you wet it, it starts to grow. But it, this didn't have dirt on the roots, and some of it is still there, dead. If y'all would go by and get out and look at my yard like it is now, not ride by on the road.
Sir, I, I rode by there earlier today, and your yard's looking great.
That's what I said, don't ride by and look at it, get out and look, there are very spots all over my yard, there's dead sod on the, on the side to the right, that's what you and I said, get out and look at it.
That was the county right-of-way that you're talking about.
Yeah, but Mr. Ingram says they're required to put it back like it was.
And I, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm just, I went rode by there and actually visually looked at it, and I, and I know the land right beside you, because I had looked at it one time, there's a 30-foot easement to there, and it's, take the easement off to your driveway to the right, look, I got a minute, we've had a lot of rain, but it looks pretty nice.
Any of y'all go by and look again, on the bank to the right, behind my mailbox, that's still dead sod laying there. And, and, and I, when they put the sod out, the first load out, I said, they were watering it to death with county water, by the way, I don't know if they're supposed to have county water for free or not, I said...
They were putting in a water line for us.
Pardon?
They were putting in a water line for us, isn't that correct?
Right, but I don't know if they have access to hook onto a fire hydrant and start watering my yard.
Yes, they, they're, they're...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if they have that, that right. They do, that's fine, anyway, to be a nice guy, I said, look, instead of y'all coming by every morning, every evening, cutting it off, you're gonna drown the grass, I'll do it for you. And I did, until they came and got the meter and the hose, you know, and did away with it. But then that last load of sod they put out, like I said, don't ride by and look, get out and look. There are patches all over my yard now, where they had the dirt piled, there's just bare spots. I don't expect to be back picture-perfect like it was, that would be an idiot to think something like that. All I expect you to do is a decent job, and they didn't do it. There's, behind my mailbox, there's still dead sod laying there, and I've got some of the dead sod piled up on the side of my driveway. And what am I supposed to do? I kept going to him, and he kept doing nothing, so, and I went to the DA's office, asked him, what can I do, though, that's not our department, I understand that, but who do you go to when you got nobody to go to?
Sure. Well, like I said, I, I rode by there, sir, and I, I mean, I...
I know you rode by, but get out and look. Call me, and I'll, I'll point it out for you.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that, I'll make that point.
Okay, you've got my number and all there.
We've got it on file.
I appreciate it.
I will.
And all I wanted them to do was put it back like it was, and by the way, in, in that first letter I gave his receptionist, I put at the bottom, just so you know, they had a giant track hoe direct across my, my driveway, was that far off the road now. They had a small back track hoe here, had a compactor there, three people standing here, two people over here, a traffic going up and down the road, and I was backing out, and the sun was in my mirror, blinding me, I only had one eye, and I'm about to lose it. And I backed into the track hoe, tracked the taillight lens, I said, well, hell, I ain't worth worrying about, it'd be 100 bucks, I ain't gonna worry with it. Well, I wanted to get a price on the taillight, 600 bucks.
I, I promise, I'll come by and say...
Well, I called, I called the law to ask them about it, I said, well, he was off, off the highway, he was off the highway that much with that track hoe, you know? All I wanted somebody to do was do what they're supposed to do.
Sure.
Like I told in that letter that you...
I hate, I hate to cut you short, but we, you know, we've...
I know you do, but...
I'll promise you, I will come by personally and sit down and talk with you.
Call me, and I'll go out there and show you.
All right.
But they think less of me now, and I think less of them, because I had to keep coming around, and I shouldn't have had to be here in the first place.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Allen Woodrum, are you here tonight? All right, we move on. Pickleball courts.
Wow. Pickleball courts, it's never sounded so good.
I might have started playing pickleball.
My name's Michelle Craddock.
Go ahead, Everett, Barrett...
Yes, all my people.
Some, now, one lady by there, you mean she, you played pickleball, too?
Yes, yes, the wife, that's it.
I know, I know, I'm getting gained up on.
I'm Lynn Dugger.
Introduce all yourself, yeah.
Jessica Tonell.
You need the addresses. Okay.
Marissa Perkins.
Sherry Daniel.
Shana Amerson.
All right, we're here to represent Jones County Pickleball, I'm the pickleball president for our little Jones County Pickleball Club. First of all, I want to thank y'all very much for allowing us to get, two years ago, our courts resurfaced, and we have thoroughly enjoyed it. It has brought so much fun to our little community and friendships as well that I didn't realize I was gonna make, so. Pickleball has crossed age barriers, it's crossed racial barriers, I mean, anyone and everyone can come and play, you don't have to have any prior sportability, it's easy to learn, it's great for families to come out and play. We have, when somebody told me, when we first started playing, that you'll quickly outgrow these courts, I said, kind of laughed, like, there's no way, we're so happy, we're to get what we got, so, sure enough, two years later, here we are. We would love to expand and get some more pickleball courts. It has been, I've created the leagues and, and tournaments for play, and I have had to become more creative than I thought I was gonna have to be to try and accommodate all of our different, I guess, groups, because we have a ladies group, men's group, I would like to do, I don't have room for it, to do like a young people, maybe a teen or young twenties... or young twenties league. There's always, we could split up from skill level, like the more advanced players would love to play with just their skill level, instead of trying to play down a little bit to some of us that don't play as well, even though we're out there playing anyway. But there have been some challenges with just working with six courts, and it's even more difficult when you try to do a tournament. We do have, or we have had several tournaments. It's been the glow ball tournament, I don't know if y'all have heard of that, glow-in-the-dark pickleball, so much fun. But we, I was limited in how I could accommodate the players, I had to just limit it to two categories, like a upper player, upper skill level and lower skill level. But if we had more courts, then I could be able to do age brackets and skill level as well. But it's a great sport, I mean, it's, I would love for y'all to come out, and I think initially when it started, Wendy was going to try and challenge, I don't know who. Oh, there we go.
But she back now.
For the record, we'll say that for the record. But anyway, it is fun, we would love a yes vote to advance and expand Jones County Pickleball some more, so I know, I think it's going to be a budget item later in the month that Burt will present as well, but if anyone-
Yeah, I just, I just want to add to what she said. You know, I talked to y'all about two months ago, knowing this was coming up, and told you I'd be back. I also talked to you about three or four years ago, and, you know, the question at that time was, well, what's pickleball? And it's been phenomenal how it's grown. Something that has amazed me is the number of young kids coming out in the evening playing. And, you know, there's a lot of things for kids to get into, but this has really been just a great sight to see kids coming out, some of them don't even play, and some of them just come out there and hang out. But something that kind of breaks my heart to see, we've, we have leagues going about four nights a week.
Monday through-
Monday through Thursday. We'll have kids coming down, I think they've probably gotten used to it by now, we'll have kids coming down to want to play, and the league will be going on.
Or families.
Or fam- and they just, they turn around and go back home, so-
Because all courts are full.
Right. Now, some of the younger, you know, some of the kids will, will hang around until the league gets over with, but it's, it's really been an amazing thing to watch. You know, we, I, I'll be honest with you, when, when I first mentioned this about four years ago, it was kind of a, my, my thinking was, we'll build it and they will come. I wasn't real sure about that, but has, it has far exceeded, I think, any of our expectations. Don't have to tell you what, you know, I mean, you know about the huge pickleball facility in Macon, you know how great it's doing. I play with friends in Baldwin County, but I'm going to tell you, my hat is off to you guys for seeing the importance of just what, what all pickleball's done. I'm a great exercise, you're a big exercise guy. It's a great family thing, it's great for the kids. Like she said, it, there are just no barriers in pickleball, there, there's not age barriers, there's not racial barriers, it's a wonderful thing. And, yeah, I tell you, I mean, after the meeting we've had tonight, and, you know, some of the things that you guys have to deal with, this is like a breath of fresh air.
Sue me goo.
There you go, there you go, there you go. So, I, you know, I just want to thank y'all, on behalf of our group, for doing what you did there a couple of years ago, but we need more, we, we really do. And we'd love for you to come down and check us out, play with us, we'll, we'll teach you the best we know how to, to play, and, but it's, that's right, it's a great sport.
That's what they did to me.
That's right, that's right. And I, I'll, I'll say this too, I know Baldwin County's going through a process right now of trying to redo their courts, and it has been a really, it's been a tangled mess. They've got some real aggressive specs, so they've received some very high bids, and they're just kind of, they're kind of in no man's land. I, I, I just want to tell you how fortunate I feel like, like we are to have Burt at the helm of the rec department, and the fact that he's getting out there playing, he, he's a pretty good player, even though he's, he says his knees are bad, but-
That's good.
But no, I, Burt understands that, I think he understands construction, understands what it would take to, to put in more courts, and I'm, they've done a great job maintaining the courts, I mean, the surface has buckled in a few places, and they've worked on that, they've addressed that. I can tell you, some of the other places I've played, stuff like that doesn't get addressed. So, anyway, I think we've got a lot going for us, and, and we're, you know, we're, we're begging, pleading, asking, and, and really would just love to see as much money as possible appropriated for the courts.
We appreciate y'all coming, and you know, y'all are welcome to come to any of these meetings. It's not always this way, but-
Only when you talk about pickleball, yes.
Yeah, so only to talk about pickleball.
Just to reiterate what he said, to watch these youth, and to have been a teacher in this county for so long, when I was down there in the summer, and to watch those youth all be down there when they could be out doing so many other things, and all of them are gathering down there, they even play with me, like they get in there, I know they probably laugh at me, but, I mean, to watch them play, and to watch these ministries, like you have youth ministers that'll bring their youth group down there to play, you have just the families, to watch the families come and do, it's just a great thing for the community. And so, I just, I think it's a win-win situation, you know, all the way around.
And we have offered several beginner classes for families, for, you know, we, we try to get a community involved as much as possible, as far as, you know, I know y'all want to come play, but let's learn how to play, correct? And, you know, some, some pickleball etiquette, you know, and, and stuff like that, so it's, it's been a tremendous, tremendous asset, I believe, to our Parks and Rec by having those pickleball courts there, and, and having more, which is, I mean, you can't go home, you really can't.
Well, we, we appreciate your enthusiasm, and, and we, hey, thank you for being here.
It won't be underutilized, that's for sure.
Oh, good thing, thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Tree City Resolution, keep Jones beautiful. Didn't get my check.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
You should have in your packet a copy of the proposed resolution, and this is something that Brennan and I spoke to you guys about. Shannon, help me out, I can't take all the credit for that. I just typed it out, and she made it look pretty. But this is something that Brennan and I discussed with you guys earlier in the year, and we've kind of gotten everything together that we need. Our goal is for, is to this, for this tree, the Eastern Redbud tree, to be deemed the official community tree. This is something that will help us regain our Tree City designation, and it's something that we plan to tie into several different events that we do as far as giving away seedlings and things of that nature. So, any seedling giveaways that we do in the future, if this is approved, then it would be the Eastern Redbud tree.
Any questions?
Nope. Glad to see us get back on the, on the train.
I'm trying, Sam, I'm trying, I fought real hard to keep our, our prior designation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Fine.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Eastern.
There you go.
It's very pink and very pretty.
How was that?
Do we already have a lot of them in the county?
So, they are native to Georgia, we are able to obtain large numbers of seedlings relatively low cost through Georgia Forestry, Brennan has that connection for us.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Wood, building permit processes on Barn Dominiums.
Okay.
We had that come up tonight, so that was a question asked.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several weeks ago, and I'm not going to call attention to any one property, as this is the process that I want to talk about, that we need to update on the application, and I'll call Tim forward if he will come up. But basically, when, there are kits that you can buy for Barn Dominiums, and right now, you get the application, and you start building your Barn Dominium, and we're running into some issues of needing engineered drawings, and I think it, if you were building a commercial building, that you buy a kit, comes on a truck, whatever, before you get that permit, you show the engineer drawings when getting the permit, am I correct? Yes. So, we have kind of an issue that's causing some delays for individuals in the county, and I think it would kind of streamline the building process, so people aren't sitting two and three weeks waiting for, hey, my insulation's ready to be put in, I got to wait, and so you, a lot of confusion, a lot of money lost, and essentially causes, costs the builders and homeowners extra funds building their projects. So, I guess, Tim said he could adjust the application, but I wanted to bring it before the commissioners, so you knew what was going on, and kind of get everybody, make sure everybody's on the same page of, we need to require the engineer prints, plans, whatever, be presented at the time of buying that building application permit process.
Tim, are you seeing what I've seen in the past, some of these kits aren't, don't supply the engineering plans, and you're, I know some counties don't have building permit, I mean, building inspectors, so they just wing, wing through it. That's what, that, that application we had tonight, that's what I asked about the building permit and engineer, and I, you know, we, streamlining this for your department, that would, I would imagine would help, correct?
Yes.
Yes. You, you need it from us.
No, sir.
Okay.
To answer your first question, none of the plant, none of the buildings come with engineered plans unless we require them. This, this one's just been an anomaly, normally we have good communication with the con, the builder or the homeowner, and letting them know, look, this is not your normal metal building you're parking your car in, we need engineered drawings for this thing. This one just, for whatever reason, we were having trouble getting engineered drawings on this one. But because they're not built to prescriptive code requirements, that's why we need these engineered drawings, and so we will slow people down requiring them to have the drawings at the time of permitting. That, that will create, create delays, but we won't wind up with the, the one-off situation we've had here.
Sure. You know, I just, I, I can only imagine, why would you not have a, a plan without, you know, for your department, because I always make this statement, I'd much, I'd much rather make a, ask a stupid question than make a stupid mistake, and if, and this is a perfect example, you know, I think, I know in my past experience on a lot of these buildings, I always have an engineer, even the time I've, I've done, I've built with you, I had a set of engineered drawings, and I can't imagine some of these kits not having it.
None of them.
So, we're saying we, we need to start requiring stamp drawings.
Yeah, but you know, oh, you just need engineers saying that if they meets, you know, your specifications or code, say code, I guess.
What we're specifically talking about is pre-engineered buildings.
Yeah.
We're not talking about site-built or stick-built constructions.
Some manufacturer stamps of, of engineering.
Not manufact-, well, no, this is a Georgia engineer signing off on the construction drawings for the building, and also a foundation for, plan for the building. And like I said, we've gotten this on all the other Barn Dominiums we've had built, I mean, we've had, for some reason, this one's been a problem. And so now, I mean, just for example, the gentleman that was here, you know, I probably spent two hours going over this with him and his contractor.
Sure.
Explaining what they were going to need on drawings. So, I mean, we will just tell people, if you're building a metal structure, that you're not going to get a building permit till you provide your engineered drawings.
Right, so you don't need anything else?
No, sir.
We appreciate your job, and, I mean, you're doing a great job, we appreciate it, and I, you know, I've, I've been in your office many times back in the past, and it's, you're a wealth of knowledge when it comes to codes.
Wealth of knowledge?
Wealth of knowledge.
Thank you, sir.
Good work, sir.
What does that mean?
I don't know. I just let you go.
I appreciate that, Sam.
I get that, we know the intent, so.
But we'll make that adjustment on our permitting process.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank y'all, thank you. All right, one more thing, ACCG leadership, Ms. Wagner.
Um, there's-
Voting delegate.
There's a legislative leadership conference coming up in October, they're asking for a voting delegate for some policies that are going to be adopted, so we have Chris, Sam, and Wendy going to this conference, so I need, I need y'all to pick who's going to vote for y'all.
Wendy's been doing a fine job of it, right?
Wendy's been doing a fine job, right?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion for-
Motion to nominate Wendy Vaughn, second.
We've got a second, second, in discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Let's have it, department heads, you need department heads tonight.
Jason, is she on the phone?
Wendy, you still there?
I'm here.
Oh, I-
Stella, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, uh, thank y'all.
I got, she's on the phone, she's been quiet all night.
She's got me.
Any department heads?
I, I, I can come over, but I just want to say thank y'all for all y'all do, I mean, y'all have tough decisions to make every night, and it never ends, so, I mean, I don't need to be y'all's side of the table.
We need it, too.
Thank y'all for everything.
Sam has let me ramble on.
You can tell budget season's coming.
Randy, you got anything?
I'll echo everything Burt said, um, yeah, if nobody can do what y'all do, thank y'all for that, and yes, looking forward to budget season.
Mr. Riz, do you got anything?
I'm good.
Young ladies?
No.
Oh, citizen comments, anyone that'd like to come forward tonight?
Good evening, board, my name's LaShonda Whipple, and I'm here tonight to address my concerns concerning, once again, Mountain Springs Road. Several weeks ago, some construction was going on, on the road, and whatever they were doing, they were doing a really good job. I noticed it's been this tractor-like piece of equipment with like a big roller on it, it's been parked to the side of the road for a few weeks now, and I was just wondering, what were, what is the, what were they actually doing to the road, what, what was the goal that they were trying to accomplish, and why has it stopped, and when are they going to start that?
A bunch of rain here recently, I can-
Well, yeah, yeah, but-
And if you saw that big roller, that's, that's what's making, getting the compaction on that road. I saw, they had a Facebook post, and I shared it, and it was showing Mountain Springs where the, the improvements and whatnot, but I think weather, all the rain that we, you know, we went so long without any rain.
Right.
And, and as crazy as that sounds, that actually hurt you, because they, they didn't have moisture, you know, they had to bring, obviously had to bring water in for compaction, I mean, I'm sure they, they came up with that, but now we have too much, you know, so not right now, I think we're in a two-packs thing.
What was interesting, though, is she sent emails to Sean during a very dry period, and I know that the machine was down, or a machine was down, I don't know if it's the same one, and then it was something else. So, to her question, you know, I wish Sean was here, we want to know, when are they going to start back up, because-
Sure, we can get your number and get, get that answer for you.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
I've already got it.
Okay, all right, we'll get, we'll get that answer for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else tonight? Ms. Vaughn, you want to start us off, commissioner comment?
She said no.
Wendy, did you hear that? Commissioner-
Did you ask me?
Yes. You've been quiet tonight, I didn't even know you were in there.
I've been here the whole time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, thank y'all for taking up my slack of not being there, I'm actually truly on a vacation for the first time in August in twenty-three years, so, sorry I'm not there, but I was there by phone and heard everything going on, and had actually already talked with a few to let them know how I stood on some things. So, first and foremost, thank you for pickleball, I love to see that growth there and the need for more courts. Still going to challenge Sam again, I know he won't go with me to play a game, so, but I, I'm here, and I appreciate y'all, y'all taking up my slack while I'm not there.
Just happy that we're getting past this tax thing, and hopefully during the budget Just happy that we're getting past this tax thing, and hopefully during the budget cycle, we'll have a chance to really see what we're gonna do with regard to the allocations of the resources that are available. And I'm happy that citizens are engaged. It takes a special person to get up here and state their case, even when the odds might be against you. And it's nice to know that we can make a right decision for a change, especially when it came to a church, because this is their second go-round, and then I'm happy that, you know, that we're able to do that, even though there'd be some sad people, but that's the job, and we do it gladly, so, thank you for the support.
Mr. Wood?
I'll echo what Daylon said, we, tough meeting tonight, I mean, a lot of motions with people, and we do the best job we can based on the information given and conversations inside this room and outside this room. And I am looking forward to, I'll echo department heads when they're talking about looking forward to the budget season, because we are here, and we have a work session coming up, what is it, next week?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, next week, so I'm looking forward to that. I am looking forward to, looking forward to lowering the mileage rate if possible this year. I know there's been a lot of conversation here and abroad about it.
That's all I have tonight. All right, well, I had, I had a roll for budget for the next two Fridays, but I guess it was either one of them, huh? One or the other, and we just chose one?
Sixteen.
All right, I'll take tomorrow, I'll take Friday off my phone then, off my, call me. All right, yeah, that was one of the things I was gonna say, I agree with what y'all said, it's not always easy to make the decisions we make, and a lot of times, the rules, regulations, policies, and guidance that we're required to go by go against your heartstrings, and that's what makes it tough sometimes, when you have, you know, when you have a decision to make that your heart tells you one thing, but everything that is opposite of that is what you're supposed to do, and you have to make that decision, and it just proves that all of us make decisions that are not personally biased, no matter who we know, who we feel about, what we feel about, or what we think about something, and I honestly think that we make a, we do a great job at looking at the facts and looking at what's best for the community and making those decisions. Do we get it right every time? No, but I think we get it right a lot of times, otherwise, we'd hear a lot more than we hear, so. I echo something Daylon said a long time ago, I'm glad to see that we get more and more people here, seeing them involved, and I think the more they're involved, the more they understand the why behind the decisions, not just the rhetoric they hear of somebody that either got their right answer or didn't get their right answer, giving their opinion of why, so, that's important, too.
I agree with the same thing, I wish we filled this room every meeting, and I know tonight we ran late, but, I mean, you know, it's a public meeting, and there's times that people need to be heard, you know, sometimes you hear the same thing over and over again, but it's their, it's their meeting, and we need to accommodate them, I got this young lady to my right that give me the, hey, your three minutes is up, but, you know, it's their meeting, and we need to be cordial in it, but we need to also, you know, there's a lot, tonight is a perfect example, the passion that, you know, all the neighbors had, whether for or against, and, again, it's our hard decision, you made it, you know, I talked about it earlier, I wouldn't have, you, a lot of folks, I mean, who'd have this job, and you gotta do it for the right reasons, for the community, and you, sometimes I shake my head, you get my rear end shoot out, but it's all about it, and it's all good, because at the end of the day, we're here for the right reason, but who's, Ms. Vaughn, you can't make a motion, so who you want to designate to do the...
Motion to adjourn, chairman.
Thank you. Second, Hall of favor, aye? Thought I was gonna have to ask.